Um, it's okay. The new point of this, this meeting. I think so is it? And, uh, I don't know. What? How do you feel about? How was it? It's the kind that I thought in the study. It's not at least an adjustment at all. Then we need to know that before that. Usually it's just, you know, the next doc.
Do you guys hear me okay?
We didn't want to go. My end far wants to say farm and they have built tonight. And then I didn't even face this. But I thought, okay.
What?
Yeah. And this is just now is the time for us.
Thanks for being here.
My moment.
What's up? Yeah. Thanks for being here. How are you doing? I'm good.
But Jack, remember, we didn't get any, um, that I could tell, any emails of public comment or anything.
I haven't seen anything on this.
I don't believe I.
You're speaking. Sure, but I haven't seen anything from my side of things. I mean, usually when you get something.
We've always got that sent to us. I just don't remember anything.
Yeah, I don't think we have. Yeah. Um, yeah, Penny will set us straight. She said she's on her way to.
Awesome.
Those stairs are so, you know. So what's that one we got about? At long end about maps? That eating street over there. Yeah, eating street regulated by, no, Nordic.
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
What was that about?
Probably right here.
Um, they're complaining that there was some things that were done accurately. And Charlie's went through and explained how it has, and he sent stuff to them. They're just sending more information back. Um, and other people are, so we just brought it on to you guys. Well, just. And Matt, I think the gist was that map was approved in twenty-two and then in twenty-three. And everyone showed us that wasn't approved. Yeah, the one that was approved, according to what Charlie found, is that one went to the county commission and had a public hearing and was approved. So, um. Yeah.
How would we know? With a sweet dog. One time either. I was taking down the office. I put the ball, make sure I'm around. On the vault, you have to help me go around.
Yeah, the last one I have on this is, yeah, I think. February of twenty-three, which is something like that. That way.
Come on, two, six, thirteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, John, eighty-three, four days.
Okay. Didn't have that.
Yeah. Go on, let's do their. Time you have to show on one that first. Phase one was just started about, you know, important.
All right. I think. We got Tammy here with him. Let me show you again.
I'm ready whenever you guys are.
Um, so I guess anybody have any questions for Tammy regarding the administrative item? Uh. That we have, we only have one item on our agenda. For the Eden acre space two subdivision.
So Tammy, I talked to her name.
Mm-hmm.
A friend and colleague of mine who lives right by this.
Mm-hmm.
Crocker. And he wasn't surprised by this. He expected this. He didn't say that. Um, the concern he has is that it's got a really high water table.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, so what's their water mitigation issues? Or maybe we don't deal with that here. Water mitigation. And then the other issue they see there, a lot of time in the winter months is that sheet flow. Where the ground claws and things start to melt, everything flows in people's basements.
Mm-hmm.
What are they, what are these parts? What are those things to be done at this point?
Uh, well, I will tell you in our meeting with the chair and vice chair last week, that same concern was expressed actually. And we had one of our engineers in there that explained the nearby store, uh, storm sewer system that's going in, but isn't yet complete. So they aren't going to be tying into that. They are proposing a detention pond in the southwestern corner of the development. And engineering who is very aware of the water issues in this area. Will be, as this kind of continues through the process, they will be making recommendations. To help keep anything from affecting in a detrimental way, any adjacent development. And to hopefully allow this to go forward through building permit with, without any concerns or interruptions or anything like that. So engineering will continue to make recommendations and look at their plans. And they'll ask for specific numbers as far as, um, stormwater runoff. And if anything looks a little above. What they would consider to be allowable, they'll then work with the applicant, um, at some mitigation measures and engineer class. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Okay.
Turning to page seven of nine. Where it shows kind of a layout, I guess. Is that?
Uh-huh.
Am I right on that?
Yes.
When you say the southwest corner, is that where the? Is that, is that the canal? Children's going through the back. Is that the southwest?
Really?
This.
Oriented map. This gets upside.
This is, yeah, how it orients, uh, if you look at.
Like that.
This.
This thing here.
So the southwest corner detention pond will be where the ditch is.
That is, they are proposing, yes, that is what they're working out.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
And just so, just to kind of remind you guys too, it's when we go for preliminary, when these applicants go for preliminary approval. Um. While it's always nice to see a final plot with a lot more detail, they don't typically submit that until final because things are still a little bit fluid. When it comes to maybe street layout or pathways or even lot layout sometimes.
Um, and before you came in, uh, Tammy, I was asking, I don't believe we got sent any public comment. I know you always sport it, but I don't think we received any.
I have not received any.
And for, um, anyone who wasn't on the commission back into that we played three. Um, at the original result of this, we had a lot of public, uh, people. Show up in person or look beyond line, talking specifically about exactly that, the high water table, we went flooding and all of that. And at the time. The advice was that's all stuff that gets discussed at the subdivision level. And so with this on the agenda, that was the main topic we had in our meeting last week with, um. The planning staff. Um, as she said, they brought in an engineer and everything, um, and that was the response. But that's why I asked about any public comment. This time I wasn't sure if we'd have quite a bit of people come in. Because this is apparently the time to discuss that.
So is that little notch out of the southwest of that flood in the north? Is that where the retention goes?
Yes, and I don't think I have dimensions on that yet, actually. I was just gonna try and.
So you're gonna ask.
Yeah, I was gonna.
Yeah.
Pull up the larger image and, but I'm not sure if those dimensions are noted on there.
I guess just an observation. What I, I find interesting is the adjacent subdivision. Um, built out over a bunch of years, those houses flood. You know, and with all the good intent and engineering and let's see. We're still building houses in that. Adjoining or in that area. In proximity, that flood. And, um, I'm just wondering, and this isn't going to be any drier than something fifty yards or thirty yards away. And I continue to wonder. You know, by everywhere, obviously, but. You know, is enough been done? Because this area floods, we know that houses flood here. And even in less than the biggest snow years, houses flood right here. New houses, you think engineered well, what they do. Maybe they learned something they can employ over here, but it. It just seems funny to me that recently. You know, there's a current flooding situation and now we're going to, there's going to be more without any, or is there going to be more mitigation here?
Well, that's why we started to put in the stormwater, um, mitigation plan started up in that area. And then eventually through these years, um, it will expand to smart prepare that. You know, most, uh, cities, municipalities, um, they don't have big pockets. And so it takes time to do that. And, um, when engineering visited with us on this, they mentioned that. To pull the lineup through the. Um, I was, he was looking at point, you know, right straight up there. Nice. They said, no, they'd like to have it out in the streets, which makes sense. And that's where typically in most cities, you have the utilities is in the streets, not, um, going up that way. And they mentioned too, with drainage, it wouldn't benefit, um, that development as much to just pull it up through there. So they were looking at some other options. Um. But felt like detention basin that's being proposed was sufficient at the time for this development. Um, that's kind of. What, did they have anything else to say?
Engineering, engineering has asked for a stormwater study. You read exactly what they have in their review. They want a stormwater study and stormwater calculations. And then I'm assuming from there, they'll continue to work with the applicant regarding the size of that detention basin and how they want that to look.
Is there any kind of that stormwater overlay or micromaster plan in that area?
Um, I'm not aware that we've got one. Engineering.
He seemed pretty. They have. Well, educated in how the water flows in that area and with the money recently spent. It seemed like they've looked into various. Ways to use that system that was just put in, but money's a restraint. Every.
Well, I was just gonna ask, is that something, uh, at? At this particular level where, I mean, what about impact fees that just hang into, um, a storm? Drain flood or?
That hasn't been set up yet, so we can't require that on this one. But that's definitely something hopefully the, the city will look at.
Um. The news.
Yeah. And right now, we spend, in the springtime, we spent a considerable amount of time up in that area. Um, with dealing with sheet flow and doing mitigation, um. Up in that area because it's a, it's a real issue.
Can you explain sheet flow? I'm picturing something. I don't know if it's right.
So sheet flow is typically when the ground is frozen and so it's not able to percolate down to the ground. And so it just flows out of the top of the frozen ground. And when we have detention masons and things like that, those are great because that can capture, um, some of that.
It can still capture sheet flow.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, but it's not the ultimate solution for sheet flow. Um, ultimately with sheet floor, you're going to want to have the strong drain system put in so that it can flow down the roads. And into the strong drain system and go out.
Mm-hmm.
So this subdivision, the slope is kind of this way, isn't it? To the south.
Yes.
Now, remember, Rick. I think we were discussing the area east of Huntsville. And how fortunate it was. He is up there, there's still ditches there.
Yeah.
They probably realize that they left the business. So when the sheet fold starts, I have a way to get in a ditch.
Mm-hmm.
And. Not flood holes.
Right.
So I wonder, is engineering considering? Putting little berms or something to stop the flow and channel it?
They do have.
Um, systems somewhere.
They typically do require, um. Easements. Um, and it looks like. There's some around the periphery of the development. And those are usually for, um, utility and drainage. Um. But I, we'd probably have to ask engineering on that.
Hmm, yeah, we see this. Okay, all this stuff on the hill is going to go down to this road. So, you know, it's stopped at the road, you got in a pipe somewhere or something. It's got to continuing to flood down until it gets to the retention basin of. Clear at the bottom.
And oftentimes they require those type of things to be put in the development. Um, and so when they do have this inability to tie into the strong drain that's already in place. My gut feel is they would be requiring that with this one at final, but I don't know. Um, that's probably why they're requiring the study to be done, uh, to warrant that. So, but that's typically how they do that at preliminary. They don't have those specifics, but they do address those at, at final.
So is it within our purview to suggest on this preliminary that engineering takes a real good look at? The sheet flow coming down there?
Yeah. Yeah, it's already in the ordinance.
Having to wrap this really.
So they, they look at those types of things.
Here's a duffel line right here at the bottom.
You know, can, next one is, you know, make it stronger.
Yeah. Right here.
That would be so it's really not a problem.
The other thing we talked about.
It's generally.
Closeout. Meeting last weekend, this was that, um. You know, right now this is set up for septic tanks. And right over here. Um. Since this was zoned into form base, a list station has been put in. For the.
Pretty west.
Um, Osprey and, um. The other development there. And, and I know within the general plan, the reason for, one of the reasons for this kind of zoning and clustering things in. In various areas is to allow infrastructure to. More infrastructure to impact these types of things. And to let infrastructure grow and migrate. But, you know, here we have whatever fifteen more septic tanks and there's a brand new list station right there. It's probably a little further away than the code might require, okay?
Right.
Right, but it's not that. If you want to get.
The list station private knows them.
No, that's been deeded.
Yeah, but if there's, they're reading the code with what they're proposing.
Right.
Yeah. So if you were to impose that, they would have to voluntarily, um, do that.
Um, could there be wording where you, one or the county is, because it's the reason these clusters are being developed. And this kind of zoning exists, one of the reasons, so. You know, it's not in the code to force them, but should, you know, who knows how long this is going to take. Wow. But. You know, how do you, how do you? For something like this, which the general plan clearly wants there to be infrastructure moving in this direction. Here you have fifteen septic tanks that aren't free. And here you have a list station right there. So how, how does this start to happen? Where you go from just writing the words in the general plan to actually executing?
You tighten up the ordinance.
Yeah.
Um. And have to do it that way.
To the jury incentivize or to request, I mean, I know we can't demand.
If you're.
Any kind of. Even just gentle discussion.
You could. Encourage the planning, the county commission to revise the ordinance. Um. But they told us that they're not going to pursue any ordinance changes, so.
Can we, can we bring it up as discussion and encourage the applicant? To think about it, but not actually make it a condition or anything like that? Is that within legal? To just bring it up?
Absolutely.
Discussion.
Yeah, there's nothing that stops you from raising the question and asking about it as long as. It is voluntary because it's not in the code.
It's just, it's such an interesting moment in time because. The reason for this. The sewer system, yeah, the sewer system was, was just so, um. It was frequently talked about from the county and everything about how we need to, we're not going to force anybody existing to hook up. But all new development should be looking at it and we should be trying to, uh, put development over these lines and all this other stuff. And here we have an actual new development and so close, it's just not exactly closed enough for the ordinance, but it's so close. And, and yet we can't. And so it's just kind of a, an interesting moment, but, um, but if we can encourage in any way, I think we should at least try because it is in the general plan.
Yeah. So, so I want to ask something. Along what Commissioner Barham was saying, if, if this. Lot of land has such a high water table, how are they going to put in septic systems?
Typically they use pack bed media system, which.
They bring in fill and raise it up.
Yeah.
Those crazy things.
Right, and the health department has to approve it and they're a winner of the water table.
Not, but we would tell the developer what to do. While we just investigate spending those kinds of funds to connect to that sewer lift station when making everybody do a. Raised septic tank.
We could encourage him to do that.
My neighbor was about four years ago required to build one of those. And right now he's without his functioning system because it's always having trouble. Those are not. Oh. No, they're not.
The more so.
Yeah.
Crazy also.
They're doing it.
Yes.
Happy to your favor. There's all sorts of stuff. And right now he's, you know, people trying to figure out how to make it work. It's four years old.
And they're incredibly expensive, I'm sure.
We can't believe it.
May look, I shouldn't. So probably the incentive is, I'm convinced cheaper to do one a sewer. Until impacted maybe or whatever the health department requires, then you do it.
Could it be cheaper for probably the? The lot owners, for the developer, it might be more expensive.
He's selling the lot.
As part of the form based plan, does it allow for infrastructure? Within the road system for future development like sewer, whether it's actually utilized at the time or not? Or would that just be added at a time when it's available?
When it's available. Right now, but in, in that area.
Alright.
I, I think I find myself in the, you know, different scenario. I, it's when we talked about this, so what in this, in this area, there's houses all around it, right? Kind of everywhere, one acre's here or one acre, let's hear it here, they have septic tanks. I mean, I don't know, there are some flooding issues sometimes and some people have septic problems. But, I mean, you pay virtually nothing for a septic tank compared to a, a sewer bill every year. Uh, I, my, my take on this. I, I, the draw of this is you move into a remote location, it's something that you might actually be able to afford. And then we require storm drain plans and we have, require silver and everything goes much higher, um, in cost. And it all has to get passed on to the user. And, you know, they let people build houses on, um. In the water in Florida, whether that's right or wrong. I think they should, you should be able to do it, so. Why, because the more we like try and. Mitigate some future unknown that someone should really take care of themselves. It's going to base the cost.
Looks like it. So we are be looking at mitigating the cost of a new home.
Maybe that's what I'm saying.
I, I will, I will tell you guys that our ordinance requires connection to a sewer within three hundred feet. From a bird's eye. Flight, this is two thousand feet to the nearest property corner. From the nearest property corner to the lift station, to that new lift station.
From the nearest property corner to the new lift station is two thousand.
Feet. Yeah.
Way.
So, and I mean, that's, that's where they, right, that's cutting through the neighborhood.
Yeah.
So probably not following a logical.
Right, but just.
Hundred to get there.
One straight.
Yep.
Those numbers are very helpful.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay.
You're right. I mean, if you can do a conventional system there.
I mean, you do it. The water table here is drastically higher than the ones that were built, like. But we had the flooding issues. Yeah. That one, they probably should have put, you know, ditches in their front yard, like the other subdivision has, they have all the rocks and the ditches that mitigate, I don't. Yeah, but that's up to the.
In the south where it rains every day, they do septic, but they build a mound and they couldn't, no. On neighbor's front.
Yeah.
The health department. I wouldn't do that.
I kind of, it's kind of a deciding, something they're going to be given, something that. People could for, you know. It's still on the higher end, but it's something.
So it's, it's just where the things got transferred from.
Sunny field.
Yeah. And they'll take care of that at final. And, yeah. Yeah, I think the last ones we do are mostly vacation homes. This could be like an actual family home.
Exactly. Um, so you just said they'll take care of that. It hasn't, uh, T B R hasn't been transferred yet. And that gets done at, you said final, so. Running start, this is.
This is.
But then I had people on phase two. And we had a question about phase one. I don't even remember a phase one.
There's one with the homes that are built. You know, what year that was initially, which is.
Okay, so that was.
Yeah, but that's like the Sammy.
Okay.
For that.
And then, and so this is preliminary of phase two. The next one would be final of phase two or, okay. So it's not like we're waiting for some other.
Yeah.
But then they have to submit all the improvement drawings and do that, and then they have to show that leaves that are prepared to show where they're being transferred to and from. And then.
Well, so.
Right.
Okay, so phase one was recorded in two thousand, January twenty-fourth of two thousand.
So was the, the state law change? The preliminary comes to the planning commission. And final. That people, the county commission?
Correct.
Final results to. And that's throughout the. The state. Final comes here.
No.
Then the final goes to me, to you.
Was that five, five or hundred?
No, it's just any finance subdivision. When we used to do them, they were mostly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like.
Did everybody check out all that? Only if makes it. From our vision. Because. And you could staffs and everything, yeah, at that point, everything's managed.
Um. Director Grover, do we still need me to make mention that, um? The bridges will be.
Yes.
That would be. Yeah. And if it's still good, it is, but I haven't written that and I mean, with that, um. They're making mention of the bridges, uh, application that notices if we're not connected correctly, so it will be on the agenda for next meeting. You know, any changes?
So. So. Um. It has nothing. It's a lot more to hear until that happens. It may not, they. So.
So you're aware there's things going on behind the scenes.
I am.
Alright.
Well, to the extent that he's shared with me what they want to do. Which isn't a lot, other than that he's been in, in contact with the sponsor, Mark Farren.
Yeah.
And it's been ten days now since he sent them, okay, I'm willing to do this, but here's my retainer. Now the ball's in their court and he'll sit, so.
Okay, alright.
I will keep you apprised.
Thank you.
Do we need to do anything with that request for a moratorium?
Alright, thank you for joining us. It is December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, the Ogden Valley Planning Commission meeting. As for a uh, roll call of attendance, we have Commissioner Frower, we have Commissioner Burton, Commissioner Schweppi, Commissioner Wampler, Commissioner Barber, and Commissioner Schuman present in the room, and we have Commissioner Morby on with Zoom online. So all commissioners are uh, present for the meeting. Uh, one note for the public, for those in the room and online, there was a, an application regarding the bridges development and that uh was removed from tonight's agenda as notices to the public had not been conducted correctly, so uh it will be on our next meeting's agenda, that would be the agenda for January. Tonight's first item are the minutes of October twenty-second. I know I have a couple of adjustments to remark on. Does anyone else have any comments about the minutes of October? And if not, um Marta, we're gonna, I'm gonna name page numbers and just tell you some names to swap. Uh, I went through the minutes, we're done wonderfully, so kudos to whoever is handling the minutes, these were, these were great. Um, I think just a mistake about the voices. So on page two, Commissioner Schweppi is listed at pa- at paragraph five. That was in fact Commissioner Frower who spoke. And then in paragraph six, where it says Commissioner Frower, that is in fact Commissioner Schweppi. On page three, at paragraph four, where it says Commissioner Frower, that is in fact Commissioner Schweppi. Page four. Third paragraph down, it starts with Commissioner Frower, that is Commissioner Schweppi. And then finally on page five. Uh, let's see, one, two, three, a couple marks down under remarks from planning commissioners. Instead of Commissioner Frower, that is in fact Commissioner Schweppi. So if those names gets whipped, uh swapped, I move that the minutes are approved as written. But we will approve them. So the next up, we have administrative items. Director Grover, if you would like to remind everyone the procedure on administrative items.
Yeah, on administrative items, you're just reviewing it per the ordinance. If it meets the ordinance and if it does, then you can approve it, um, subject to conditions that are applicable to the ordinance. If you want to include additional um, recommendations outside of the ordinance, um, that would be more at the applicants um being volunteering to do that. Um, uh, this, you do not need to take public comment, but if you would like to, you're more than welcome to, and Tammy's going to be presenting.
Wonderful.
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, you have before you an application and request for preliminary approval of Eden Acres Phase Two, a fifteen lot subdivision in the form-based zone. The approximate address is twenty-seven hundred north, fifty-six hundred east. And because it was mentioned um in the pre-meeting, phase one of Eden Acres recorded back in January of twenty twenty. Um, the project site is approximately twenty-two point nine four acres. The applicant is proposing fifteen total units. Uh, there are currently seven development rights tied to this property with eight more planning to be transferred in. Something to be aware of is that in this, in the form-based zone, there is a street regulating plan tied to this, and to show you where this project sits. It's located in this area here. You guys can see that, okay? Um, it is located on a rural residential street. And that designation, um uh, that designation sets the development standards. So these are minimum forty thousand square foot lots, a hundred and fifty feet in width. Applicant is proposing public right-of-ways throughout this development um that are sixty feet in width. He's provided septic feasibility, a will serve letter from Eden Water Works and has shown that he's got irrigation shares for his secondary water. This is just kind of some information specific to this development. He's proposing lot sizes that range uh from forty-eight thousand to sixty-nine thousand square feet. They all meet the minimum acreage and width requirements. And just as a matter of information in the form-based zone for this type of development, these would be the setbacks that will be applied once building begins. This is a pretty straightforward development. I know there were questions about stormwater. Um, and, and the, the representative for the applicant is here. If you have any questions for him, I, I can assure you that engineering is taking a very close look at this development. Um, and how to ensure that nothing is uh, that things will only improve with this development with regards to stormwater. And so staff, just given this information, given that it meets the ordinance, staff would recommend approval based upon the conditions and findings outlined in your staff report. Give any questions for me? Or the applicant.
Any commissioners having questions for staff? Okay, would the applicant like to come up and speak?
Hello, my name's Sean Clegg. Um, I'm the applicant. I live um adjacent to this parcel in the Eden Acres Phase One. Um. I, I guess I just want to start by reminding everybody kind of what the genesis of this project it was and is, I guess. So we, sorry, no, keep going. We um own Sunnyfield Farm, the land there, and we want to, we wanted to find a way to preserve the farm, to preserve the open space in that area. And so i- it came about where we were able to acquire this parcel and we had the idea of transferring development rights out of Sunnyfield Farm to this uh develop, look to this parcel. Um, we figured this was a good parcel because it was adjacent to already um existing density, which I feel, you know, I, I love my neighborhood. I feel like it's great. It's a great area. It's very desirable and we wanted to kind of add on to that and provide more space uh for people to enjoy what you know, me and my family have enjoyed. And so we figured this was a good, great parcel for that. Um, so we sought the approval, we got the, the form-based zoning approval, and now we've been working for a little bit over a year now to try to get to this point with subdivision. I know there were concerns about stormwater. We have been working very, very closely with um engineering department on making sure that if anything, things will be better than they were before. What we've determined is there is a drainage canal, well, I don't know canal, but creek that comes from the north, uh, I guess would be northeast corner of the property across the road and it drains into a culvert, so it's an open, you know, drainage uh pathway that goes into a culvert and it dumps into our property. And so that's been a big source of a lot of water. That's been kind of unmitigated. What we um have planned is to facilitate that water so that it's no longer draining just down into that ditch, which has caused problems in an adjacent subdivision. It'll drain down and it'll go into a already existing storm drain and properly flow out. Um, which would improve, one, um, the groundwater, that it's not sitting there before the ditch, because there is a little lull sinking down and increasing the groundwater. But also um not increasing water in the ditch, which is causing problems down, downstream. And so, again, engineering's been working very, very, you know, closely and, you know, we are running more studies on making sure that we're mitigating this water properly. But that is being addressed. If you have any questions for me, I'd love to answer anything.
You, you just mentioned storm drain and, and I think in here and in our previous conversations, there was talk of the detention pond on the property. Are those two separate?
It goes into the detention pond and then would drain into the storm drainage, so if it didn't accumulate enough in this, in the detention pond, it wouldn't be added into the uh.
So when you say storm drainage, are you talking about the new line that's just recently been run through?
Well, there's already an existing one that drains out, I think, further east.
And have you considered now that there there's a list, uh sewer lift station? I think I just heard two thousand feet away from this property or the edge of this property. Have you considered utilizing that versus septic?
So Eden Water has actually asked us not. Yes.
If they hadn't asked you not to, would you have considered it?
Um, probably not because it's up. So we would have to pump, I would believe, up to that point.
Any other commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Any discussion or any further questions for staff? Discussion amongst the commission. If not, then I'll call for a vote.
I got one question. So the staff recommends one subject to. So engineering shall approve of submitted improvement plans. Does that mean shall approve this submitted improvement plans? Yeah, before it goes to final, they would approve the final improvement plans. Okay, the, the final improvement plans, some of which haven't even been submitted yet. Yeah, okay.
Although, right, I mean.
Yeah.
You just, you put that in there is to reiterate it is all, right?
Correct, right. There's generally some back and forth between the applicant and engineering before those plans are finalized.
There's no, I mean, there's no difference in normally have to happen.
Right, that is correct. Mm-hmm.
I'm making.
Question.
Yes, I motioned to approve um the consideration and action on a request for preliminary subdivision approval of Eden Acres Phase Two. Fifteen lot subdivision, file number U V E one zero two three two four. Recommend approval based on the staff recommendations and the findings in the staff report.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Schweppi? Any comment discussion? If not, then I'll call for a vote. All in favor of approval of U V one zero two three two four? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, sir. Alright, um, any public comment for items not on the agenda? This is the time either anybody in in person here in the chamber or online. Looks like we have Jan Fulmer.
Um, yes, it's Jan Fulmer.
Will you state uh your address, please, for the record?
Certainly. Um, the address is three seven four one Red Hawk Circle, Eden, Utah, eight four three one zero.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess I just have two questions, uh commissioners, not related um, to anything on the agenda. Hold on just a second.
Thanks.
Alright, uh, not related to anything on the agenda, but the first question is I can't find something, but is there an official T D R ordinance for Weber County and is there some process set up for how people say, I'd like to buy something and then to have something posted for someone who wants to sell maybe T D Rs? Has anything ever transpired with that?
Okay. Does that complete your question?
That's the first question, yes.
Okay.
And the second one. Um, there was a meeting this morning, um Stephanie Russell from uh Economic Development, it was a real short meeting before the commissioners meeting. And everything went wildly fast. I did have my hand up, but for some reason I was disconnected and I never got to ask a question. But the question wasn't so much about the public infrastructure district. But the documentation that was published with this indicated that the plans for Nordic had changed. So my question is if in fact the plans have changed and if there would be more development units, does this have to go up before the Ogden Valley Planning Commission?
Alright, thank you.
Okay, those are my two questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else for public comment online? Anyone in the chamber? Alright, thank you. Director Grover, would you like to address?
Do you want those addressed or do you want us to um address those two separately?
Um, if you're prepared at this moment.
The second one I'm not prepared, but the first one, yes, we do have a T D R ordinance um in place to a certain extent. Um, it allows anything in the valley floor to be sending areas and the receiving areas are on the form-based areas.
Alright. Um, and as for her second question, you can get back to her. Okay, thank you very much. Alright, next on the agenda, we have remarks from planning commissioners. Does anybody have anything they'd like to bring up?
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Alright, next on the agenda, we have uh the planning director report.
Um, as far as information, there's not a lot to report on. Um, the last meeting in January, we will be having um, the project, the bridges um on your agenda. That exact date is let me just look here, January twenty eighth.
Do we have a work session before that?
We don't in January.
So our next meeting is the meeting.
Yep, yeah. And the calendar, um, Marta, did that go out for their approval? Okay, we'll have that for your January agenda, um, but uh, yeah. That will be your first meeting.
Alright.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much. Remarks from legal counsel. Thank you very much. Remarks from legal counsel.
Nothing tonight, thanks.
If that is all, then we will be adjourned.